Thank you for being a part of our council meeting this evening. I'd like to have Mary Jo call the roll, please.
Mary Bill Beer.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Barb Politzky.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Meg Ryan Schack.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Following the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing for prayer. Father Bill of St. Thomas More Church will offer our prayer this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Let us begin in name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and with conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be leaders of your people's needs. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. And now a reading from the letter St. Paul to the Romans. I urge you therefore, brothers and sisters, by the mercies of God, to offer your bodies as a living sacrifice, holy and pleasing to God. Your spiritual worship, do not conform yourselves to this age, but be transformed by the renewal of your mind, that you may discern what is the will of God, what is good and pleasing and perfect. For by the grace given to me, I tell everyone among you, not to think of yourselves more highly than one ought to think, but to think soberly, each according to the measure of faith that God has apportioned. For as in one body we have many parts, and all the parts do not have the same function. We, though many, are one body in Christ, and individually parts of one another. Since we have gifts that differ according to the grace given us, let us exercise them, if prophecy in proportion to faith, if ministry in ministry; if one is a teacher in teaching, if one exhorts in exhortation; if one contributes in generosity; and one is over others with diligence; and if one acts with mercy, do it with cheerfulness. The word of the Lord. Thanks be to God. And let us pray. God of all holiness, you have called us to be servants of your servants, our brothers and sisters in the city of Brooklyn. We meet here as your representatives, and so we ask for the grace of your guidance. Help us to truly represent them and not simply ourselves. May the true needs of our city and the common good of all be our concern, and above all, may your will in these matters become our will. Help us to serve in leadership. Remember that all of our concerns are aimed at the spiritual transformation of our community. May the material aspects we discuss not blind us to the primary work of our city, the holiness of all its members. May the Holy Spirit, who inspired the Pentecost meeting of the Apostles, visit us and grant us the light of divine wisdom. We ask this for our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen. Blessed is the Almighty God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit come down upon you, remain with you forever. Amen.
Thank you, Father Bill, for your prayer this evening and for your time. I'd also like to thank the pastors from now all six of the Brooklyn churches that have been so gracious to come and pray at the opening of our council meetings, as well as Lieutenant Colonel Borg. I very much appreciate your time and for your asking of God's blessing on our meetings. A couple of notes to be aware of. Please be advised that there'll be a meeting of the City of Brooklyn Audit Committee this Thursday, June 28th of 2018, at 8:00 a.m. That will take place in the conference room. For the second quarter audit committee meeting, you discussed the city's audit in progress. This meeting is not open to the public due to the nature of the items being addressed. We will now proceed with our council meeting at this time. We will have the public session. If anyone in the audience is in the save for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Changary, and my son John Changary is with us today. We live at 8705 Morton Avenue in the fine city of Brooklyn, and he has a message for everyone, and you might want to listen.
Hi, my name is John Changary. I would like to address some concerns that I have about the city's tornado warning system. This information I am sharing with you guys is from the FEMA app, which our First Lady Melania Trump has suggested that we download on our mobile device. Here is some information. Sign up for your community's warning system, the Emergency Alert System, EAS, and the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration NOAA Weather Radio also provide Martin Steelers. If your community has sirens, then become familiar with the warning tone. The reason why I came here is to speak about the siren. We need to get this siren repaired and/or, if necessary, replaced because if people have flip phones, they can't get text messages on their flip phones, and if they don't have a TV, well, they might have a TV, but if they don't have a TV that has stations for the Emergency Alert System, they are in the risk factors of serious injury. And in conclusion, our siren in our city should be repaired or replaced for the well-being of our citizens of Brooklyn. Thank you. Thank you for the council and everyone here.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Okay. We do have some minutes that need to be approved this evening, and they are the minutes from the meeting dated June 11th, 2018.
Move to approve as amended.
To approve as amended, Mary Bill Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Outstanding.
Meg Ryan Schack.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Okay. Well, now I have the reports of committees, commissions, and boards. Just to let everyone know that the Public Safety and Environmental Committee will meet this evening immediately following our council meeting, and there are two items on the agenda, the first of which is the possibility of sharing an animal control officer with the city of Parma Heights. Chief Melkey brought this to my attention some time back and asked that the committee could meet to discuss this. And the second is ordinance 2018-52, which is on our agenda this evening, and this is to amend Section 967.12 of the codified orders of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio entitled Forestry Program Orders. Those are the two items that will be on the agenda for the committee meeting this evening. Next up is the Domestic Abuse Commission. Councilwoman Ryan Schack.
Our last meeting was held on June 14th. We approved minutes, discussed hanging bathroom signs around the community, got feedback on what those might look like, talked about potential locations around the community, including both city and private businesses that we can hang them. We are waiting to see, waiting to hear if we have received the Walmart grant. We should find out about another month or so, which would help to print the signs and new brochures for information for residents. We also discussed the potential partner with Love Doesn't Show, which is a local nonprofit geared towards unhealthy relationships in teenagers with our schools this summer. We will not meet over the summer months, but our next meeting will be September 6th at 6:30. And also, Ohio law is changing on July 1st, and this is really good news. It was introduced and passed earlier this year, and it is extending the civil domestic abuse rights, including access to shelters as well as protection orders for couples that do not live together. So prior, you had to be either related to someone to get the domestic abuse rights, or you had to live with your partner. Now it's extended to people, couples who do not live together, and so that's a way that Ohio is moving forward to help victims of domestic abuse. That ends my report.
Thank you. The Planning Commission will meet next Thursday, July 5th, at 6:00 p.m. to discuss the following: A request from the Douglas Company for a monument sign for Brooklyn Point at 4,800 Idlewood Avenue; a request from Ace Lighting for a new signage package for the Hampton Inn at 10305 Cascade Crossing; a request from all signs and designs for one wall sign and one double-sided sign on an existing multi-tentative freestanding sign for Granite Depot at 11400 Brook Park Road; a request from Brilliant Electric Sign for one freestanding and one wall sign for Rider Truck at 11250 Brook Park Road; a request from a sign above for one freestanding sign for Taylor Group at 1 American Road, Suite 800; a request from Brilliant Electric Sign for two internally illuminated wall signs for Victory Capital at 4900 Tiedemann Road; and lastly, a request from St. Thomas More School for a preliminary plan review for new entrance, drives, and parking for St. Thomas More School at 4180 North Amherst. Again, that's next Thursday, July 5th at 6:00 p.m. in the conference room. All are welcome to attend. Next up is our school board liaison, Councilwoman Politzky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I got an email from Dr. Gleikhoff, and it says, "This is what I sent to the staff after the hire a couple of weeks ago of a teacher for grades pre-K through 7." She lives in Strongsville with her husband and two children, and this is what it said, June 6th. Last evening, a special Board of Education meeting, Mrs. Christine Cisco was approved as the principal of the new Brooklyn Grade School. Ms. Cisco is currently the principal of Meadow Lawn Intermediate School in Perkins Local Schools. Her school has shown great growth through the state report card in her time there, as well as instituting many initiatives. During her time at Meadow Lawn, the progress metric and gap closing percentage improved dramatically. The school initiated Data Days and an RTL framework that helped provide targeted intervention for students. Mrs. Cisco has great energy and enthusiasm for her work, and it makes her a worthy addition to our hurricane team. Also, those who may not know, Principal Amy Gleikhoff resigned and is going to North Ridgeville Schools, and at the June 20th meeting of the special meeting of the School Board of Education, Mr. Bill Wrangler was approved as the new principal of the high school. He was the assistant principal, and hopefully, everything will work out very well with both of these new principals there at the school. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Cisco. The Finance Committee did meet this evening as normal at 6:30 just prior to our council meeting, and we discussed the following items. I will only address those items that were new to the agenda or will be adopted this evening. There were two requests. The first was to accept a $600 donation made by Elwood, Ohio Machine to the fire department, and if approved, that will be used towards purchasing some ancillary equipment as needed at the fire department. The second was an authorization to apply for the NOACA grant for a new senior bus. For the senior citizens, we did receive some information just prior to the meeting. The cost of that bus would be $66,000, or van would be $66,880. The city would be responsible for 20% of that. Both of these requests were approved by the Finance Committee and recommend that council adopt. Up for third reading adoption this evening is ordinance 2018-4. This is adopting the tax budget for the fiscal year 2019. Ordinance 2018-51, these are the amended annual appropriations. They've been discussed at both the prior council meetings. Ordinance 2018-53, establishing fee ranges for registration participation in the different youth, adult, and senior team leagues at the rec center. The youth, adult, and senior participation fee schedule ran from $25 to $100. Youth, adult, senior team league fee schedule ran from $120, range from $125 to $600. That is on second reading, but the administration has asked that we pass this by suspension since this is our final meeting before the summer break. Ordinance 2018-54, authorizing the mayor to enter into a job retention and creation grant with TRG Studios, and again, the administration has asked that we pass this by emergency for the same reason. Ordinance 2018-5, authorizing the mayor to enter, excuse me, authorizing the submission of an application to NOACA for Cleveland Urbanized Area FDA funding from the Enhanced Mobility for Seniors Individuals. This is in regards to the request I just mentioned a second ago that actually allows the administration to submit the application for that grant. Ordinance 2018-55, and 56, these are sister ordinances. Again, we hope to pass this by emergency this evening, and this adds Lindale is one of our community partners for the rec center rates. They would join our other partners with Parma, Parma Heights there in getting discounted rates at the rec center. Ordinance 2018-57, authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with JJ Real Estate Solutions for the purchase of 4747 Tiedemann Road. And this ordinance and ordinance 58, which is the following ordinance, authorize the mayor to purchase these two properties, one at 4747 Tiedemann, the other at 4761 Tiedemann. The 4747 parcel will be purchased for $42,000. 4761, we purchase for $157,000. We are putting this on first reading this evening because we wanted to give the residents in that area notification that we are going to be purchasing these. Our Economic Development Director actually hand-delivered letters today to the residents that live along Tiedemann Road, letting them know that the city will be purchasing those properties, and again, these two are on first reading. Ordinance 2018-60, authorizing the mayor to enter a job retention and creation grant with Rhino Systems Incorporated. This allows for a $45,000-plus grant over three years with our standard percentage offer of 30, 20, and 10% in exchange for relocating 17 jobs in one year and adding additional 83 new jobs by year three for a total payroll of $5 million and a retention period of 10 years. The project investment for relocation, equipment instruction, and construction, so on and so forth, is $2.6 million, and they're going to relocate to part of the property at AG and take up 65,000-plus square feet of space. While 83 new jobs is part of the contract, they do anticipate having, hiring more than that as time goes on, and this contract does give them some flexibility for additional advantages if they do go over that new amount. Then lastly, or excuse me, second last is, or excuse me, lastly is ordinance 2018-61. This is authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2018, and if this goes through, this will update our plan to include LED lighting for Bit Off, Tiedemann, and Ridge Roads, at least the city's portion of that, and this was recommended by the Public Works Committee, and the total is $18,842 for this new lighting, and this is only a portion of the cost. The rest of it will come from our portion of the NOPAC grant, and that amounts roughly to about $39,000. And so we'll be getting the new LED lights on Tiedemann, Ridge, and Bit Off. I've seen these lights in different cities, particularly in Michigan. They look very, very nice. I want to thank Mr. Selhertz for his work on this. This work on this project actually dates back to when he was on council before, and so it looks like this is going to come to fruition. I think the residents that drive down those roads, which is pretty much everyone in Brooklyn, will appreciate this work if this goes through. And that is the last item for the Finance Committee. Again, we meet at 6:30 prior to all of our council meetings. All are welcome to attend. We'll now move on to reports of council. We'll begin this evening with Mrs. Bell Beer.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Father Bill, for taking time out of your busy schedule and doing the opening prayer. It was very beautiful. I'd also like to thank you for the special blessing. That was wonderful also. Thank you so much for coming tonight. I don't know if you've ever been to a city council meeting, but I know you have a lot of parishioners from Brooklyn at St. Thomas More, but thank you once again. Also, I'd like to thank the young Changary boy. He has a lot of spunk to get up there and talk about the tornado's warning, and he did a great job. I'm sure his father, his grandfather Lou would be extremely proud of him. Since we're closing and coming to summer recess, I wish everybody a happy Fourth of July next week. I know everyone will be celebrating with their families, but I can't help but think about the immigration situation that we have in our country. We'll all be celebrating the wonderful summer with family, friends, apple pie, and fireworks, but I only pray that God guides our leaders in a way to handle the immigration situation that's been on everyone's mind. We are a great compassionate nation that was built by immigrants, and surely, with God's help, we can determine the best outcome where the anguish and trauma of separating families is at an end. We did not become the greatest nation on earth by ignoring compassion, empathy, and common sense. I pray with God's help, these qualities will prevail, and I wish everyone a happy, safe summer. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Next up is Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. Good evening. I also want to wish all the Brooklyn residents and their families a very safe and happy summer. If anyone is looking for something to do this summer, our recreation offers a variety of activities for all ages to stay active and have fun. So please get out, enjoy our great community. Thank you for listening. I'm reporting.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Mrs. Politzky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I'd also like to thank you, Father Bill. It was a great speech, and yes, we do need your blessing. On Sunday, Mentor Police Officer Matthew Mazzani lost his life in a hit-and-run accident. My condolences to his family and the Mentor community. I just found out this evening that it was a 24-year-old young man that actually hit him. One careless moment, and two families' lives are affected forever. To our young people, please move over when you see a police vehicle stopped. It's the law. To our Brooklyn police officers, we can't thank you enough for what you do for us every day. Thank you for your service. Also, on a good note, save the date of Wednesday, July 18th, at 7:00 p.m. for our concert in the park. I'm sure we'll have a great time, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Politzky. Next up is Miss Meg Ryan Schack.
On July 1st, Seattle, Washington will officially ban single-use plastics, including straws and utensils. This has been in the works for a decade while alternative solutions have been in the works. I think it is great to see such measures take place as less plastics are becoming eligible for curbside recycling. It was even more promising to read that over 200 Seattle businesses voluntarily adopted the ban last year. Meanwhile, in Ohio, state senators have introduced Senate Bill 210, which would prevent cities from enacting such laws. Not only is this potentially detrimental to our environment, as much of this waste ends up in our parks and our waterways, but it also infringes on municipalities' home roof rights that we have in Ohio. If you are against this legislation, you can reach out to our state senator, Senator Skandell. His office number is 614-466-5123. I also encourage you to become more aware of the single-use plastics in your daily routine, including, I know I go to Dunkin' Donuts a lot, and it's really hard to bring my own straw or ask for no straw and, you know, take off the lid, but just be more aware about the single-use plastics you're using that end up oftentimes in our waterways and our parks. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Selhertz.
Thank you. Thank you to all the people that donated to the Zerins or Zerins Facebook, GoFundMe account, either if you donate through that or through directly to Bob Hennings. Every dollar helps that situation. A big thank you to Nicolet Javorski and David Turner for helping to clean up the leftover utility pole pieces, parts. They were tied up in the wires by the library. A little bit over two weeks ago, I emailed them on the late Friday afternoon, following Monday evening, late night of our last council meeting. Crews are out there about 8:00 p.m. cleaning everything up, so that stuff's been hanging around there for about two years. Coming up Saturday, August 18th, quick reminder, picnic in the park. It's going to be from 1:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. It's free admission. There's a GJ from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., a band by the name of Billy Lake Soda from 4:30 to 8:30. There'll be bear and lion food trucks, and there will be fireworks at dusk. There'll also be a car show, craft vendors and exhibitors. And as Mrs. Politzky was saying, please drive safely this summer, especially on the side streets. Kind of slow down, you know, if you've got cars parked on the side, maybe if there's cars parked actually on the side you're driving, wait a second or two. You never know who's going to open up a door, or a kid comes running out in between. Dead extra second or two might just be kind of big consequences if you're in a hurry. And that's about it. Wish you all a happy and safe summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Selhertz. Next up is Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I too would like to thank Father Bill for coming this evening, for the opening prayer. We appreciate it, and we also appreciate what you do for our community. Thank you also to John Changary for bringing up the situation with the tornado siren, and Chief, maybe when it's your turn, could you address the current situation with our sirens so the public is aware? I too would like to offer my condolences to the family of the Mentor Police Officer that was so senselessly killed, also to the Mentor Police Department and all police officers, because it does impact all police officers when they lose one of their own. And as has already been mentioned, please be very cautious, whether it's driving within our community, with the kids all out and about, or when there's our police and firefighters are out, whether it's on a highway or, you know, one of our other streets. It is the law that you've got to pull over to the left. I know that for firefighters, that's like some of the scariest calls they go on is when they're on a highway. People are just so distracted and not paying attention, and so please, everybody be very cautious. I'd like to thank Mrs. Dawn Neal, Secretary in the Building Department, for all her efforts. She was the person who coordinated the community-wide garage sale that took place over the weekend. I know Saturday, the weather didn't cooperate. It was a little iffy because it rained several times, but yesterday was certainly a beautiful day, and I know it was very nice to see residents out, you know, going to their neighbor's sales or going back and forth on Facebook, certain people looking for things, and then other residents would post where they saw them. So thank you to Dawn for all her efforts in that. At the last meeting, I mentioned a serious problem that's happening with the contamination of recycling, and I got a couple of calls from residents, and I think what part of the confusion is with plastics is from the time we began recycling in Brooklyn, we were always trained to look at the number, and then we would have the corresponding number, and that's how we knew whether it was something we could recycle or not. Well, unfortunately, it's no longer that easy. Basically, for plastics now, it's the plastic bottles and jugs with the cap on. So when you have all these takeout containers and the containers that some of the produce comes in, even though you look at the bottom and it has the recycling symbol and it has one of those common numbers like a 1 or 2, it doesn't mean it's recyclable, and unfortunately, it isn't. So we would all like to be able to recycle as much as possible, but we're hurting the system more than we're helping when we put items in that cannot be included in curbside recycling. Right now, it's to the point where 99% of our recycling is shipped to China, and they have such serious problems with contamination of the recycling, which basically means that the things that are coming over are not recyclable, that they have placed restrictions on the materials it will accept, including plastics and papers. They basically are demanding only cleaner, sorted recyclables. So even though we feel really good when we put as much as possible in the container, we have to make sure we're doing it properly, and everybody should have gotten one of these magnets at some point this year, and basically, you've got to stick to what is on here for the curbside recycling. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't take some of the other items, for example, the plastic grocery bags, you can take back to the receptacles at the grocery store, you know, used batteries at Best Buy. So there are other options, but for the curbside recycling, it's very important that you stick to the five core types of materials. Regarding ordinance number 2018-52, which has to do with our trees and shrubs, I spoke a little bit about this at the last meeting, and I do understand that there are concerns about this, and we are going to have a committee meeting after this, and that'll be one of the topics, but I do want to stress that this amendment is not meant to address the usual complaints we receive when there's a neighbor's tree or shrub that maybe are growing, overgrowing on the resident's property. In these situations, the neighbor is allowed to trim the foliage that is overhanging their property. So from time to time, we encounter situations where there's something seriously wrong. It could be a disease. It could be like a tree hit by lightning to a tree or shrub that has created a hazard to the public, which also could include a neighbor, and a resident refuses to take responsibility. At the end of the day, this is really about people taking responsibility for what's on their property. Mr. Butler modeled this after an ordinance that's in effect in the city of Lakewood. I've had a very lengthy conversation with their Director of Public Works, Mr. Joe Benno, and I'll share that more specific information at the committee meeting. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. I also want to thank Father Bill for returning my phone call, responding, and again, for all the pastors in Brooklyn that have taken time, I know. I work in a church, and so I know how busy the pastors can be, and so I very much appreciate your time for that. I think it's been a very positive addition to our council meeting, so thank you again, Father Bill, this evening and for the rest of the pastors as well. Also, I want to thank John Changary for his comments regarding the tornado system. We'll actually discuss that as well in the safety meeting if we need to. I do want to wish everyone a happy summer. Happy birthday to America. 242 years old. We'll take, we'll celebrate on July 4th. I do make sure that you're safe as you're celebrating, and we do live in a country I do make sure that you're safe as you're celebrating, and we do live in a country of laws, and I want to thank our law enforcement for enforcing those laws. I know that we're very divided right now, unfortunately, with what's going on in our nation, but it is important to remember that we are a nation of laws, and if we do not follow those laws, then we no longer will be a nation. And so there is a combination of justice and mercy that needs to take place, but I do want to thank our law enforcement for enforcing the laws that are passed. I do want to wish everyone a happy summer. To kind of dovetail what Mrs. Pucci said, I was out and about quite a bit on Saturday, and it seemed like every other house was having a garage sale and ducking in and out of the rain, unfortunately. But the yards especially, I noticed, are looking very, very good for the most part. So keep up the good work. I know my wife, even though she's very pregnant, is out doing, planting flowers and things like that at our house, and so keep up the good work. It's wonderful to drive around a city that has beautiful lawns, and so I want to compliment the residents for that. And with that, I think Mr. Tansky, you have one more thing you need to say?
Yeah, one thing for Mayor, when she gives her report to address that wall that's put down both sides of 480, I'm getting a lot of calls from residents between that wall that the state put up and the fence. In between that wall and the fence that's running down both sides of the freeway, the weeds are out of control along with garbage and everything else getting thrown in there, and residents cannot get to it, even to clean it up. So if you can address that in your talks, in your negotiations, I know you've been working on it, I'd really appreciate that, so the residents and the city can see that we are moving forward to try to do something.
All right. And that completes the council report, so we'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Venkirk. I hope everyone enjoyed the Second Annual Garage Sale. All the residents have participated. It is our second year, and we're always looking for feedback and things to make it better, so if you have any feedback, just don't hesitate to call my office, or as Mrs. Pucci said, Dawn Neal, who organizes the event at the Building Department. Also, I mentioned at the last meeting, the city was granted the Master Plan Grant from the county, $50,000. Our contribution is eight, and thank you to Meg Ryan-Shawky who wrote that grant, but I want to give a little update on that. I will be meeting with the Kaia County Planning Commission this meet, so after that meeting, I'll be able to roll out the process from there. They're going to give me some tips on the most effective way moving forward since it is an update. Next, I want to remind everyone that Brooklyn Point Senior Assistant Living Facility is having their Hard Hat previewed this week at 4:30 this Wednesday, so if you're interested in checking it out, all are welcome. Thank you to all the residents last week who came out to my neighborhood meeting on Tiedemann. A lot of residents from that Tiedemann area in Manoa came out. It's kind of a difficult location to get to. This week's meeting, this Wednesday at 7:00 PM, I'll be holding another neighborhood meeting at 4087 Apple Creek, and then a series of other meetings throughout the summer, all seem to fall on Wednesday at 7:00, and so that'll be on the city's website if you want to check it out. Some are located in the parks, so it's easier access for people. My other issue that I wanted to talk about is I got this NOAACA update, and it was talking about our roadway pavement maintenance report, and they had a little background in our city. And then at the same time, I got a bicentennial invite for Kailega Heights, and so I wanted to read what NOAACA had about the city of Brooklyn as part of our background, and then kind of talk about why I am reading this. So it says, "When the original Brooklyn Township was founded in 1818, its boundaries were Lake Erie to the north, Brook Park to the south, Cogga River to the east, and West Hunter 17 to the west. Much of the area was annexed by the city of Cleveland, and four and a half square miles is what was left. It became Brooklyn Village in 1927 and the city of Brooklyn in 1950. The name Brooklyn was chosen for the village because it sounded nice. One of the names considered was Egypt, since there was so much corn grown in this once thriving farming community." Well, you know, reading that, the reason I bring this up, you know, it's a nice little recap, but if you look at our city's seal, our city's seal is 1867. Nowhere in those dates was 1867. And I know this is a huge kind of debate in the Brooklyn Historical Society. Nobody really understands why our city's seal has that date. Some say it's just someone didn't do their homework really well. If you talk to Barbara and Dave Steppich in the Historical Society. And at one point, the city considered updating our city's seal. So last year, a resident came to me and wanted to talk about doing a celebration of the city year, I think it was 150, based upon that, and I was hesitant because I don't know if that's not the correct, I know it's not the correct date, so we're celebrating the wrong date. I think it's probably a good opportunity, as any, to start talking about where we want to go from here. We can keep having this, these messages and random people's reports about our wrong date, where we can look at maybe using this as an opportunity to update our city's seal, kind of giving a fresh new vibe, especially talking with the Master Plan Committee. It might be kind of a good tie-in to just a new, fresh look at where we're going from here. So I sort of wanted to give everyone's thoughts about that moving forward, and I'd really like to just kind of solidify, where is that birthplace for Brooklyn? Where's that starting point, so we can celebrate it and really mean something when we're having these celebrations about the beginning of Brooklyn? So that's my little off-topic thing. I want to thank Andy for taking care of that pole by the library. I know there's about three of the directors over there that have all contacted David Turner, and you are the magical person that got that done, so congratulations. Also, I want to remind everyone, picnic in the park is August 18th, it's noon to 6:30. Chamber is expanding this event, they're going to have fireworks again this year, food trucks, but they're also going to have an antique car show as well as a craft fair, so please come on out. I want to remind everyone that, and I know Maria's going to cover the concerts in the park and some other events she has going on in the Recreation Center. And then lastly, I would like, I mentioned to Ron before the meeting, I would like to have an executive session after this meeting, just briefly, to speak about hiring the Finance Director for this position. So I also would like to include the Law Director, Mr. Butler, and Interim Finance Director Val Perry, so if you can make that happen, I would very appreciate it. And to everybody in the audience and everyone at home, I hope you have a terrific summer.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Next up will be our director's reports. We begin this evening with our Rec Manager, just begin to you.
Good evening. The Recreation Center will be hosting a few events. There will be two concerts in the park this summer. The first one will be Funkology, and it will be held on July 18th from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. They cover a wide variety of hits from the 1960s to today, including classic Motown, pop, disco, and rock. The second concert will be with Haywire on Wednesday, September 5th, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. They're a rockabilly band that plays everything from Blue Sway Shoes to Peggy Sue and other roots-rock songs. We also will be hosting a dog swim in the indoor pool this year on Sunday, August 5th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, resident only. Please note, you must sign a waiver in order to participate. These waivers can be picked up at the Recreation Center or found online under the Recreation Department. Dog handlers must be 18 years of age or older. All dogs must enter and exit the facility on a leash. Dogs must be unleashed in the pool. Dogs must be non-aggressive. They must be able to enter and exit using the ladder or stairs. Dogs, the dog swim is for dogs only. Owners and onlookers are not permitted in the pool. All dogs must be within view and control of the owner at all time, and if any dog acts aggressively, you and your dog may be asked to leave. Please be courteous and pick up after your dog. That concludes my report.
Mr. Venkirk, maybe, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Tansky, I know you asked a question and I failed to answer. I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Verba, if you don't mind. He's been working with ODOT closely, he's been out there a few times with him, and he can give a good backstory of where he is at in that process.
Thanks, Mayor. I have been in contact with ODOT several times. I'm actually supposed to meet the Maintenance Supervisor last week. He got called away. We were not able to hook up. He is now on vacation till Thursday. He's going to give me a call on Thursday, and hopefully we can connect this week. Basically, what, I had sent an email to the person that was in charge of the Sound Barrier Project voicing the city's displeasure with how it has not been kept up. It kind of, from what I understand from ODOT, went through several different channels, so they are looking into possibly getting the fence removed, but that would take at least a year by the time they would contract that out. If they would remove the fence, then it would be up to the resident to take care of the property at that point. In the meantime, that's not going to help anybody's, anybody this year, so I'm supposed to meet this Maintenance Supervisor, all the complaints that I've gotten, I have areas that I'm going to show him, he's going to try to take care of as much as he can. If you have addresses of people that are complaining, please get them to me. I don't know if he's going to be able to get to every complaint this year. Of course, we're going to fight him and try to make sure that he does get to all the property that has not been maintained, but at this time, I don't have an actual agreement with him. He did try, they did try already to start down Sabre and Elizabeth, they had a machine behind there, and it almost tipped over because of the slope, so he still doesn't have an exact method of how he's going to do this. So that's where we're going to meet, but any problem areas, please call my office and give to me, if any resident has their address they're concerned about, please just give my office a call, (216) 635-4219, and I'll personally take him to the property. That answer your question?
Yeah, John, it's just, I think both sides, Southwood and all those streets that dead-end, I think Summer Lane's one of them, all the ones that dead-end to that wall down there, I think I've gotten complaints, especially when we were out in the campaign mode last year of that wall and that fence, because they can't get in between it, and we know that, to cut the weeds, because they go back there and cut them if they can. Is there any way they can go in with chain and whips and do it that way? Get beyond that fence and take it down that way, since they can't get in with a big machinery?
Well, that's what we're going to discuss at the meeting. Basically, in my opinion, you know, we had engineers design this project, and they never thought about the problem that we are now faced with, so now it's up to the Maintenance Guy, and he's not real happy, and I don't think, he's trying not to point fingers, but basically, I think that's basically what it is, is that they didn't consider what was going to happen in between. That's why we're trying to get them to at least take down the fence, and then it would be up to, and again, I stress, it would be up at that point, because they're releasing it right away, it would be up to the homeowner to take care of the property after that.
Is there openings in that fence now, where they'll be able to get in and do something?
Very, very few. I mean, one end, all the way down to the other, there's not many openings in between.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Thank you, Mr. Verba, appreciate that. Next up is our Police Chief, Chief Moki.
Thank you, Mr. Venkirk. I'll speak to the, Mr. Changiri, the younger's concerns about the sirens first. The sirens have fallen into disrepair over the years, they've been very difficult to keep up and running. The last administration decided not to fix them due to the financial constraints. In the meantime, we've stressed the use of Code Red at the time, and we've transferred, we've transitioned over to Ready Notify, which is the county's notification system, which allows you to receive it not only on your phone, but through email also. That system does allow us to do a reverse 911-type phone call to certain areas or to residents, so you can contact them still by phone number. But the sirens themselves are no longer operational. The report I had earlier was just a reminder that the 4th of July is coming around, and fireworks are still illegal in Brooklyn, so I encourage you to celebrate responsibly, but also to be a good neighbor, and maybe just use sparklers, so that's it.
Excuse me, may I be recognized, Mr. Venkirk? Chief, I just have a question, and if you don't know this offhand, it's okay, you can get back to me, but I know we struggled in the beginning when we transitioned from Code Red to Ready Notify. Do we still have low numbers of residents who've registered?
We do, and I've spoken to the county about this. They're in the midst of getting a request for proposals to get a new vendor for this Ready Notify, because they're not real happy with it either, and I can tell you, most of the cities and the county aren't happy with this, and I've encouraged them to look at Code Red, which is a system that we've used, and I believe that was better than what we're currently using. But I truly do believe that it should be a regional approach on this notification, because so much affects so many communities. So I spoke with the guy down at county, and he's, he's kind of on board, but you've got to let the process play out with that, so.
But in the meantime, I would encourage any resident who is not signed up with Ready Notify to please sign up.
It's on our website.
I know, but I think, do you know what the numbers are? What our registration is? And if you don't, that's okay.
It was probably about 400 or 500 last time I checked.
Okay, which is really low for a city of 5,000 some houses.
It was an opt-in, where the red, Code Red was opt-out.
Right.
So.
Okay. Well, I would encourage people, if you're not registered with Ready Notify, to please do so. Thanks.
All right, then, our last report for the Directors this evening is our Economic Development Director, Mr. Yuris.
Yeah, the Commissioner.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Chairman, I only have one item that I wish to request. I received a phone call today from the representatives of Rhino Systems. This is ordinance number 2018-60, authorizing the mayor to enter into a job retention and creation grant agreement. The company has requested the council consider passing this emergency and by suspension of the rules, so it can sign its lease agreement with IRG and not delay their construction and relocation. They've had a very strenuous lease agreement negotiations. It was a very, how should I say, strenuous on both sides, and they're urging they would like to get into the property as soon as possible, so they're asking council's consideration of this under suspension. And that's all I have to report.
You're good. Thank you, sir. And I just spoke a second ago, we do have a report from our Building Commissioner, Mr. Coulser.
Thank you, Mr. Venkirk. With summer here now, a lot of people are able to, like to put up swimming pools. You can buy them in a box at Walmart, Sam's Club, very inexpensively, got a filter and pump, and they're great, but the thing that you have to remember is that they do need permits. We came across one that was put up right in the easement underneath the power lines the other day. So a couple considerations when you want to put up a pool, no matter what kind it is, that it does need to be fenced in, and that's one of the biggest safety concerns with pools, and then also the electricity that's feeding the pump for this also needs to be GFCI-protected, and those are a couple of the biggest things to consider when you want to put up a pool in your backyard, even if it's a $100, eight-foot pool from Walmart with a little electric pump. All these rules still apply, and safety's a big concern with any pool, so feel free to give me a call if you have any questions regarding that before you make the dive. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Unintended, Miss Tansky?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that reminder, Mr. Coulser. All right, we'll now move on with our legislation. We begin this evening with two requests. I have a letter from our Fire Chief. Mayor Gallagher and City Council, the Fire Department has received a donation from Elwood City Forge Company, an affiliate of Elwood, Ohio Machine, on Brook Park Road in the amount of $600. And then pursuant to BCO 135.06P, this letter is to notify you of the donation, express my appreciation to the donor for its generosity, and that comes from our Fire Chief.
Move to accept the grant, or donation, excuse me?
Second? To accept the donation. Mary Bellbir.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Venkirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shawky.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
The second is a letter from the Mayor, dear members of council, the city of Brooklyn is seeking a funding opportunity through Enhanced Mobility for Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Program, the Northeast Ohio Area-Wide Coordinating Agency, NOAACA, to submit a proposal for a capital grant under provisions of 49 U.S.C., Section 5310 of the Federal Transit Act, to provide transportation service for the elderly and disabled in the city of Brooklyn. A new van is being requested for the Brooklyn Senior Community Center. The estimated cost is approximately $66,000, $880, which is 10% more than our recent quote, January has actually been adjusted down now. Consequently, the most Brooklyn would expend to acquire this van is 20% of that figure. A resolution of support is required for this grant, to determine the timeframe in which the grant funding opportunity was announced, and when the grant application is due, we ask that the resolution is passed at tonight's meeting. Funding for the project is 80% federal, 20% Funding for the project is 80% federal, 20% city. A public hearing will be conducted at the Brooklyn Community Center on Monday, July 9th at noon, for the purpose of explaining how the grant funding request would impact the intended demographic and any public comments regarding the application of this grant, and that comes from the mayor.
Move to authorize the application to NOAACA for grant for senior boys?
Second.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Doesn't the resolution take care of that?
The resolution is a mandate for the grant application. The grant request is a mandate by city council, requesting that all grants be approved by council, especially when there's funds attached to it. The ordinance, the resolution doesn't name the funding.
Okay. Thank you.
To approve, Mary Bell Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Art Palitski?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-4, up for a third reading and adoption, adopting the tax budget for the fiscal year 2019. Any comments or questions?
Move to adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Mary Bell Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Art Palitski?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-51, the amended annual appropriations. Any comments or questions?
Move to adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Mary Bell Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Art Palitski?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-52, to amend Section 967.12 of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio Intended Forestry Program orders. That's on second reading. Ordinance 2018-53 is on second reading, but is asked to be passed by suspension of the rules establishing fee ranges for registration for participation in youth, adult, and senior teams and leagues through the Brooklyn Recreation Department. Any comments or questions? Introduce by all, suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Mary Bell Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Art Palitski?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-54 is also on second reading, but is asked to be passed by suspension of the rules this evening, authorizing the mayor to enter into a job retention and creation grant agreement with TRG Studios.
Introduce by all, suspend the rules?
Second. To suspend the rules, Mary Bell Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Art Palitski?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Order is 2018-55, establishing Lindale Community Partner Rates at the John F. Coyne Recreation Center and Aditorium.
Introduce by all, suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Mary Bell Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Art Palitski?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-5, authorizing the submission of an application to NOAACA for the Cleveland Urbanized Area FTA funding from the Enhancement Mobility for Seniors Individuals with Disabilities Program.
Introduce by all, suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Mary Bell Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Art Palitski?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
To adopt, Mary Bell Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Art Palitski?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
And then the sister ordinance of that, ordinance 2018-56, providing for the programs operated and conducted by the Recreation Department of the city of Brooklyn. This simply adds Lindale to that list.
Introduce by all, suspend the rules? Second.
To suspend the rules, Mary Bell Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Art Palitski?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
And lastly, is ordinance 2018-61, authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2018, and this, of course, as I mentioned in my financial report, is to add the new